Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. As we do all meetings, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag, and I will ask the members of the commission to lead us in those two pledges. Please rise. Thank you. As part of the moment of silence, I'd like for you all to please keep in your prayers the brother of two of our county employees, Janie Reyna with Human Resources, and El Reyes with my office, whose brother passed away a couple of days ago. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I've got the city's flag drawn, and I've got a report. Which item is it? Isn't it consent? This one. I'll take this one after the presentation. Public comment. Did you sign up? Give it to me. First public comment will be Mr. Don DeLeon.
County Judge, County Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Don DeLeon. I'm here on item Z, on A, windstorm, hail, and flood. I know the agency I recommend or represent is the Clement Insurance Agency. We weren't recommended for this item, but however, take note that we are the only agency with an office here located here locally. That itself is what we try to do is create jobs, keep the money here locally, and that happens to be that 5% rule where we have something here. We also talked about possibly doing educational training. I know that the values on some of these buildings that the county owns, it was a struggle getting all the information to get this bid in. It was a lot of work, and I however know that our agency wasn't recommended, but I think when it comes down comparing apples to apples, we're right there. You know, we bid this through TUIA. It's not when a catastrophic hurricane or tornado is going to come. Please consider that. I appreciate your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Any other public comment? Consent? Any item under consent that any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately? Let me pull out Z-A in reference to that one, just so we can have some clarification. Anything else?
Judge, can we table item X-C, the request of the Elections Administrator?
Which one?
X and C.
X-C.
Regarding voting supplies?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Martha?
A-A, double A, for discussion.
Mr. Garcia, have you, what we talked about two weeks ago about the travel, have you, have you all checked to make sure it's all necessary and mandatory?
I know that the Arts Office was checking on that, and our office sent out, Pete sent out a memo earlier this week as well on that issue, so we're working on that.
Because even though we're only seven months into the budget, we're already starting to run out of money. That's why I'm asking.
There is, we, there was a list that was provided to the court on the balances. The only change that I saw was for item 2QQ, is provided on the detail right here by the county administrator, and that would be on Judge Sally Gonzalez, 5-1. There are 20 credit hours that are required and have been earned to date, and I know Judge Sally is here as well. But she did send an email for her travel item that is back on the agenda. That's all.
Can I ask a question then, with the judge?
Good morning.
Morning, Judge.
If, Judge, if you've already earned your hours, is it necessary for you to travel for this one also?
This is our annual conference that I have been a member of this association like for about 37 years. Last, a couple of years ago, the membership of our state association honored me with a lifetime membership. We do have additional, we have some legislative changes that come into effect in September. We have a specialty school at that conference. Another thing is we are also, Judge Beniochow and myself are meeting with the directorship because we are bringing the conference to South Padre Island this coming year. So we're bringing monies to the county. It's additional training. It's a specialty training. We always have specialty classes at our conferences.
We do too.
I understand that. And, you know, I would really be especially honored to represent Cameron County once again at our state conference like I do every year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
E-E. You pulled double E. That was on the Commissioner members, Commissioners Court members' travel. I just want to know who's traveling. I'd like to know who's traveling besides myself.
Okay.
I'd like to pull double F, double G, double H, and double I.
Double F, double G, double H, double I.
Correct.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to approve consent with the exception of the items that will be table, which is specifically item X-C, pulling out to discuss item Z-A, double A, double E, double F, double G, double H, double I?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Adnan this?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez. All in favor, stand by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let's go to the item that was addressed during public comment, item Z-A. Who's going to speak to that one?
Judge, can you pull out all of item Z, just in case there's questions on any of those?
Okay. All of item Z then is pulled. Specifically, Mike, let's talk to that, the, I think he mentioned the 5% rule, and what that means is that if the bid in our costs are within 5%, it's local, that we have the option to award it to that entity. Does that apply here? I don't know. Speak to the Mike.
Sure.
Mike.
Cameron County, the policy is, per the statute, would be 3% for counties. And before we actually go much further, I'd like to introduce the county's insurance consultant for property and casualty insurance, Carolyn Miller with RWL Group. She's spent some time, quite some time preparing the RFPs. We received the RFPs. She went through the analysis and evaluation of those RFPs, all of them.
She looks a lot different than Ken Wethy.
Yes, a little bit different.
Just a tad. Come on up and kind of tell us how you did it and what you did. I know, I saw the evaluation and the numbers that were generated, so it's yours.
What I did is I read through all of the proposals that I received on the various lines of coverage and compared forms, and also compared pricing.
Just to clarify, you are from where?
The RWL Group's office is in Richardson, Texas, which is just north of Dallas.
So you have a dog in this fight?
No, no. We are strictly fee-for-service. We don't sell insurance. We don't have any affiliation with any kind of an agency or insurance company or anything. So we provide a service to the county to assist you in these types of matters. And I evaluated the various proposals that were received and compared not only the coverages but also the prices. No one agent or company provided a proposal to include everything that the county had on its list of insurances that were up for renewal. And in the case of the, in the case of the windstorm specifically, let me just make sure that I have that correctly in my mind. Clement Agency proposed on the windstorm and on the flood, and they had two options under windstorm, and it had to do with the difference in deductibles. Texas Wind Insurance Association is like an insurer of last resort. They do provide wind coverage primarily for what's considered Tier 1 counties, or where there is high hazard for wind, and their deductibles offered, I believe, were 1% and 2%, but let me look and see just to be sure. Yes, the wind deductible that they offered was 1%, which is-
They being whom?
Clement. I was just addressing the gentleman's question about why it may not have, why it wasn't kept local. The quote, and what I looked at was the 2% wind deductible option because the county currently carries a 2% wind deductible option, and the agency that currently has the coverage also proposed a renewal program that included a 2% wind deductible option. So when I was doing the comparison, I was looking at the 2% wind deductible option. And essentially, the wind proposal from Clement Agency was windstorm only, named storm, windstorm only. And that option was $907,000. The program that was presented by the incumbent agent, which was more than just wind, it was all of the coverage on all the buildings for basically all of the insurances that are on the buildings and the contents, electronic equipment, et cetera. The proposal that they presented was for $521,000, including the wind. And so my recommendation to continue with them was made because paying $900,000 for wind only was not logical when you could buy wind and everything else for 521.
That makes sense.
Makes sense, okay. Anything else? Any other comment? Michael, Mike?
Carolyn would like to continue on with Z because there's several areas that she would like to address with the court, and she does need the court to recommend, present her recommendation to the court and get some direction on some other matters relative to the issue.
So it's not within the 5% then, is what you're saying, from 500,000 to 900,000?
Well, it's almost double. It's almost 100% more.
Right, okay.
Not quite, but it's almost 100% more and less coverage. So with the $521,000, you're getting more coverage for a little over half the money.
No, no, I understand. I'm just making sure that it's very clear that we're not within the 5%.
Oh, absolutely not.
Okay.
3%, according to Mike, right? 3%.
Oh, we're not, we're not within 3% then.
We're not even within 50%.
And that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure it's clear because we see numbers, but the public doesn't see what we're looking at.
I understand, okay. With your permission, I have four items that I want to discuss with the court as it relates to the insurances. The first, the first item is, has to do with the windstorm. Currently, the court carries $50 million windstorm limit on its buildings and contents. The $50 million windstorm limit last year cost $115,000 to raise it from 25 million to 50 million. This year, the $50 million limit is included in the $521,000 proposal, but you have been given an option to reduce your windstorm to $25 million and save $30,000 in premiums. So it would be 491,000. It is my recommendation that you not reduce your windstorm coverage to 25 million. I think that you have a high enough concentration of values and a high enough likelihood of severe damage should a strong hurricane come through, that for the $30,000, it's not in the county's best interest to reduce the windstorm limit from $50 million to 25 million.
And this is total loss?
Yes. Well, this would be the total amount that they would pay in any one occurrence in the event of a named storm coming through Brownsville, Cameron County.
What are we paying for the first 25 million?
It's included in the $521 million cost. Now, I didn't have them break that out.
So they didn't say half price for half the amount?
No, no, no. What they, the, they, what they did is they provided a quote for $521 million, which included- I'm sorry. 500, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. $521,000, which includes $50 million limit. Then they presented an alternative quote in the amount of $491,000, which includes a $25 million limit. And you have the option of accepting that. That's the only difference between the two quotes, is that one is it with a $50 million limit, and the other is it a $25 million limit. And I can't recommend that you, that you go the 25 million. I think that you need to consider the 50 million at the $521,000. So the difference between the two is $30,000. So you're paying an extra $30,000 this year to go from 25 to 50. Last year, you paid an additional $115,000 to go from 25 to 50 because you're currently carrying a $50 million windstorm limit. So the cost to you this year is significantly less than it was last year to maintain the coverage that you currently have. Okay. The next item that I wanted to talk to you about was the deductible that the county carries on its automobile liability. You currently carry a $5,000 deductible on automobile liability.
Where is that, what page is that on, on our handout?
I think that you were given, it's included in my email of June 4, and I think that you were given a copy of that.
Page 4, Commissioner?
Page 4?
Not on the spreadsheet. It's, the premium for the automobile liability is-
Page 6?
Yeah, the premium is, it starts out on page 6, and is actually the premiums from Texas Association of Counties is on page 7 of the spreadsheet. But the discussion part of it was included in an email that I sent to Suzie and to Mike on June the 4, and that is item number 2 on the areas that I broke out that needed to be considered by the court. The county carries a $5,000 deductible. The premium for the $5,000 deductible this year is $135,799, which is a nice savings over last year. The $1,000 deductible option is $153,336. So we're looking at an additional $17,537 to move from a $5,000 deductible to a $1,000 deductible. The reason that I have recommended a $5,000, excuse me, a $1,000 deductible is that over the last five years, not counting this year, the county has had an average of 31.4 automobile accidents. Now, all of those are not at fault, but for those that are at fault, you pay a $5,000 deductible. And until the accident occurrence factor gets brought under control a little bit better, I think it's in the county's best interest to go to a lower deductible because ultimately what you pay out will be less.
And it's 5,000 per incident?
Yes, now.
How many of those 31.4 were county's fault?
I do not have that information, but even if you're looking at 25% of them being at fault, you still end up paying more in a deductible than you pay in the additional premium to move from a $5,000 deductible to a $1,000 deductible.
Of those 31.4, how much did we pay?
I don't have the loss runs with me, so I can't answer that question.
So you didn't consider any of that?
Well, I looked at the loss runs to determine how many accidents there were and overall the total losses for the given term that we were looking at, but I did not analyze each individual loss as part of it, no.
Because if 31.4 is what we're looking at, but 29 of them weren't our fault-
That's true.
It wouldn't make sense.
If it was less than 25% were your fault, then you're going to end up not, and that's why I wanted to give you folks the option to make the call whether you go with a $5,000 deductible and save the premium, or you go to the $1,000 deductible. Now, I will tell you that at the time that we did the RFP, and the losses were generated for the purposes of the RFP, there had been only seven or eight losses this year. So seven or eight accidents this year, which tells me that there's something going on that is improving your accident rate.
But even if there's just four that meet the $5,000 deductible, four out of the 31-
Then you're paying as much-
You're paying, you're paying already the premium.
Yeah. And that's why I wanted to discuss it with you and lay out the information so that you could make an informed decision on which level of deductible you wanted to retain. Okay? The next thing that I wanted to take up with you is I think that the county should consider removing uninsured motorists and personal injury protection from its automobile coverage. You carry that, you have carried it for quite some time. These are coverages that almost never are called upon to provide any kind of payment because in almost every case, anyone riding in a county vehicle is going to be a county employee on county business, and if an injury occurs-
Workers' Comp.
Workers' Comp is going to pick it up. In the last five years, you have had two uninsured motorist claims which paid out 50, a little over $5,100. The uninsured motorist coverage all by itself is this year $15,621 for just this year. To my knowledge, the personal injury coverage has not paid any premiums, I mean, any, any losses. This year, that amount is $6,845. So the two coverages this year, $22,466 if you keep them.
That'll make up the 20 grand?
Yeah, it would, more than. And the chances of them being used are very slight. The, as you can see, two out of the, you know, two accidents out of five years worth at 31.4 accidents per year, and $5,000 payment doesn't warrant paying $15,000 a year for that coverage. It just doesn't. Anyway, my recommendation is that you consider removing those two coverages from your auto insurance. Okay? The last item that I want to discuss with you has to do with the district clerk E&amp;O and the crime coverage that I've recommended stay with Montalvo Agency. The pricing that we have in the spreadsheet is an indication only, which means that the premium dollars are not firm. They are, we are in the process of updating and providing to Montalvo current application information on those two coverages, but the underwriters were not willing to release firm pricing without applications that were completed and signed. Part of that has to do with the fact that there have been two claims, two losses under the district clerk E&amp;O, and one under the crime coverage. I don't believe anything, any amount was paid under the district clerk E&amp;O, but because there were two incidents found and because there was a claim put under the crime coverage, they're wanting the completed signed applications before we can get firm pricing. And so what I have recommended is that the court approve a not greater than premium for each of those that would allow for the fact that the pricing could go up from where it was indicated once the applications are received. That way, if you put a ceiling on it now, as recommended, there would not be a need to bring it back for a special session. We can go ahead and get this, get these applications finalized and get the actual firm pricing in place. So, those are the four items I wanted to discuss with you today.
Any other questions?
My only concern is the uninsured motorist part.
Yes?
We have so many uninsured motorists in this particular part of Texas that it would take one, one accident with one of our vehicles, and many of our vehicles are very expensive, very expensive vehicles, that they would, you know, I don't think $15,000 is that big of an amount for all the vehicles we have on the road and the potential for them to be hit by someone that's not insured.
Well, I understand your concern, but also consider that you're paying for comprehensive and collision coverage on those vehicles. And so if an uninsured motorist hits one of the county vehicles, it is, it is most likely going to be covered for collision coverage. There are some that are not, but there are, the majority of the county vehicles are newer and are insured for collision coverage. Now, granted, there is a $1,000 deductible on that, so the county would absorb the $1,000 deductible at least to begin with, and if there's any kind of recovery available, then Texas Association of Counties, which provides the coverage, would attempt to get a reimbursement of that, and if they are successful, then the county would be reimbursed out of, out of the proceeds if they were able to collect enough to do that.
Do most of our vehicles carry full coverage?
Most of them do.
Almost all, what percentage would you say carry full coverage?
I can't, I don't know that for sure. I'd have to look at the actual schedule to tell you that.
Martha, you have any idea?
I'm not sure what the percentage is, but we carry full coverage on vehicles that we're still paying on. So all of the vehicles that are fully paid for do not have full coverage.
And the percentage, what is that percentage?
I have no idea. We don't have those many new vehicles at this time. I don't think that information was-
Okay. My next, are the majority of our vehicles new right now?
No.
So most of them don't have full coverage?
Correct. I have a list of the vehicles with me. If you want it, I can go get that and look at it and come back and address that in a few minutes.
I'd like to know, I mean, it's just, you know, it's not a lot of money that could come back to bite us real hard if we had a few vehicles that, you know, they say 31 of those vehicles that were in accidents did not have full coverage with uninsured motorists. Not all of them, it's not going to happen every time, but it does, I've had it happen to me.
Yeah, I had it happen to me, too.
I think everybody's moved and hit by uninsured, uninsured motors, so. And I carry a lot, some of my older vehicles that I have from my company have liability only. So pretty much it's my, it's out of my pocket if something happens. It'd be the same way with the county.
Right.
That's my concern.
Well, I mean, like I said, I have a copy of the schedule with me. I can go look at it and tell you, it'll take me a little bit of time to look at all of them and count the number that have, that they don't have the collision coverage, but I can, I can do that and come back up and address that.
Well, then let me have, then let me entertain a motion to approve item Z-A through J with the exception of item, is it B? Little B?
Little B, yes.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve all the other ones?
So moved.
Move back Commissioner Adnan this to have a second.
Do we need to, do we need to make a decision on the 1,000 or 5,000 deductible as part of the motion?
What are you recommending?
I'm recommending one.
1,000.
And I'm also recommending the 25, the 50 million on your windstorm level.
Okay.
Okay.
Those are included, are they? Yes, sir.
Second by?
Second.
By Commissioner Gassam. So we'll just come back when you're ready, and we'll bring you back up. You may have to wait till 3 o'clock this afternoon, but we'll be done. I'm just kidding.
I have a plane.
Well, it's going to leave without you. No, I'm just kidding. All right. All in favor, stand by by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Just let me know when you're ready to go back on item B.
Okay.
Double A, consideration approval of a joint law enforcement operations task force. Martha, you pulled that one?
Yes, I did. I spoke to the sheriff on this, and the only information that I wanted to give to the court is fringe cost is not billable, so he would like to reestimate the fringe cost will probably be anywhere between $300 and $400, and he wants to use the fringe cost, pull it from the general fund from 100, 560 from remaining funds they may have in their line items. So he requested that.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Do I hear motion?
Salute.
By Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item double E, members to corpus, who is going?
I am considering going. Everything is okay.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Move by...
Is anybody else?
I am.
I might go, just if I can get an inexpensive hotel, because by the time I decide I could go, it was like unaffordable. Okay, let me know. Commissioner, are you going?
I'll probably wait and go to the TAC legislative update in the fall.
Yeah, I may do that one, too.
There's one in August, I believe.
In August, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I may do that one as well. All right. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatsa to approve item double E.
A comment, the only reason I brought this up is because I was notified, I remember I talked with Aunt David or about not having enough hours, and I need to do this one and another one to complete my hours for the year, and I haven't really kept up with it. So you need to know whether or not you've, you know, he's exempt, but the rest of us have to do so many hours a year.
Well, you know, I think I'm exempt, too, according to the letter of the law.
I don't know.
I believe it's 12 years, and then you're like old time, and this is my 13th year.
You get a merit of status.
So if we get technical, you can exclude me from going, and I don't have a problem from that either.
That's good.
Okay.
Martha, why is mine yellow?
Congratulations.
Well, mine's blank, so I don't know, do I...
You don't exist.
Do I have hours? Do I need hours?
You have none, according to this.
You have none.
You have no hours.
So do I need to go to this one?
You need hours.
16 hours per year.
16 hours.
Is it calendar year, correct?
Calendar year.
I might go, then.
I think I need to go.
You need to make hours for previous years, but not for this year, okay?
Well, whoever needs to go, needs to go. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. On double F, double G, double H, double I, are they all the same issues, Commissioner?
The only reason I pulled them, Judge, is because we're approving something for the next year's budget, because they're going to travel October, so it'll be next year's fiscal budget, but I know that they need to be able to send in the registration fee. So I just wanted to clarify.
All right. Do I hear motion to approve?
Salute.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries. Let me take a few items out of order. What I'd like to do, I'm going to take item H, item F, and then we will go to the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority presentation, then we'll go to the rest of the agenda. So let me take item regarding the South Padre Island Convention Center, which is item F. Let me take that one out of order. Discussion, update, and possible action of the possible improvements of the South Padre Island Convention Center.
And Judge, just so you know, at 9:15, I will have to leave because I've got to be somewhere else.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you very much for taking us early in your huge agenda. The purpose of the agenda item is to come and bring you an update on the renovation expansion of Convention Center. I've kept a couple of you updated as we're going through the process. We're wanting to go out to RFQs for a hotel, the possibility of a hotel on the property. So we're here to ask for your blessing on that and to be able to move forward. I've got with me two members of the consulting group, Bratus Group, Gilbert Gallegos and Diana Gonzalez. Gilbert's going to give you a very short PowerPoint, tell you where we are, what the process is that we're looking at, and where we need your assistance. Thank you very much.
Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Judge, County Commissioners. I'm Gilbert Gallegos. I'm senior vice president with Bratusen Associates. I'm also an architect, and we have Diana Bravo Gonzalez, who's a project manager here, also is present. I'd like to give you an update in terms of how things are moving forward on this very important project for South Padre Island and obviously Cameron County. Last night, the Commissioners, actually the city council, had a presentation in terms of approving a particular scheme for this particular project as it's moving forward. This is a $30 million total project cost facility, and the scheme that we're bringing to you this morning is actually within the budget assigned for that particular amount. Now, the approved scheme last night that took place has some attributes in terms of the existing facility. First of all, the existing facility is going to be upgraded. It has a 20-plus-year life cycle that's currently in place, so it does need some better efficiencies, better operational needs in terms of keeping that facility ongoing, and we call it a refresh for another 20, 25 years. That's going to take about one-third of the overall project budget in terms of upgrading the existing facility. So they are making an investment, making sure that that existing facility is upgraded and has a fairly long life cycle as we move forward. There was also a study done by Johnson, A.C. Johnson, reporting in terms of what's the best use of that particular facility. There is going to be an expansion of...
You know, just out of curiosity, you know, scheme kind of sounds like a little bit fishy, you know? I mean, you might choose another word for the approved plan or the approved proposal or...
Or use the schematic entire word.
Yeah, this is a concept land that was approved, yes.
You know, I'm sorry, but it just has a bad connotation in what I've read.
Not a problem, Commissioner.
Not in your report, but in just general.
There were several different options that were looked at by the transition board, which actually had been delegated the responsibility to move this project forward, and this is the last one that was actually approved last night. So we only have one option, one concept that we're bringing to you today. 18,000 square foot exhibit hall expansion. The current facility is 22,000, so it's going to bring it up to 40,000 square feet in terms of size. There's also going to be a new concourse. One of the key features of the location is the bayfront view. So there's going to be a concourse that's actually going to be, you'll see it in the previous plans, that's going to be part of the expansion. It's actually going to make a very strong connection visually with the bayfront plaza. There's also going to be a 15,000 square foot ballroom that's also going to be included as part of this particular project, and there's going to be an expansion of parking about, net about 75, and that's in non-wetland areas that we can certainly build on. Existing facilities you see in gray, that's going to be renovated, as I said, one-third of the cost. The gold is going to be, orange gold is going to be the expansion, and I'll show you how that's going to work. We have the exhibit hall expansion directly east of the existing exhibit hall. The ballroom is going to be more on the north west corner. It's going to have a bayfront view. We're going to be able to take advantage of that and use the concourse actually to make that strong connection. There is going to be a catering kitchen included and, of course, backup house elements with regard to that particular facility. Here's a site plan that shows the current existing facility and the expansion, and here's an aerial view in terms of that particular expansion. We'll have some renderings here that kind of give you a feel for the flavor. This is the current entry that will be modified on the Convention Center. As a drive up to the Convention Center, you can see on the left the waiting wall, which we are going to remain as part of this particular expansion. This is a view looking east at the entry point. This is a view looking from the ballroom, from the bayfront side, looking at the ballroom on the left-hand side and the concourse connection. So as you can see, it's going to make a strong connection visually to the bayfront. This is an entry view of the leading into the bayfront plaza. We have the exhibit hall, the capability and the concert on the left-hand side of having approximately 4,500 attendees to a concert. On the right-hand side is the banquet layout that will roughly be about 1,100 people on a banquet style. This is for the exhibit hall itself. One of the key items in terms of the approach was to have flexibility for this particular design in terms of having not only lecture hall, but also banquet and actually having concerts and having this be a destination point in terms of conventions and other venues to support an increase in tourism and attendance for South Padre Island. This is an inside view of the exhibit hall and the concert setting. This is a view of the bayfront concourse leading to the ballroom itself. As you can see on the left-hand side is the bayfront. One of the key elements in terms of this concourse is to make it wide enough to make sure that there could also be some displays and some, actually, revenue that could be generated off this particular concourse itself. This is the banquet hall in a banquet hall layout, about 600 seats, and a lecture hall seating about 1,300, and also the flexibility of taking that ballroom into additional five separate lecture layouts totaling about 180 apiece. So that gives us the flexibility in terms of using that space, not only in terms of the banquet itself, but also for other meeting uses. This is a view of the bayfront ballroom. And one of the key elements that we'd like to discuss with you in terms of moving forward on this particular project is a hotel, which is a very key element in making sure that this particular project is successful. On the right-hand side, in terms of the overall master plan, you see on the left-hand side the overall concept in terms of design for the existing Convention Center, but on the right-hand side, we've master planned a hotel, about a 250-room hotel to be located on-site, which will be a one-stop center and also be able to work in collaboration with the Convention Center in terms of supporting the convention in terms of additional spaces, also in terms of functions, possibly maybe a full-blown kitchen, and also having beverages in terms of providing support to the Convention Center. So this is going to be a very key element in terms of making sure that this is going to be successful in terms of moving forward with regard to the expansion. You can see in plan view, it includes a 300-car parking garage. It's master planned to support the displacement of the location of the hotel, which is currently on an existing parking lot, and you can see a strong connection with the Convention Center itself. Here's an aerial view of that particular master plan. But some of the key items in terms of moving forward, and Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to make mention of these or not, but in terms of moving forward with regard to the hotel, we all know that this is a partnership with Cameron County. We know that this is going to be an important project both for the city and Cameron County, and we'd like to have a partnership established in terms of moving forward on this project, and we want to keep that fairly communication line open in terms of expectations for the Cameron County and also the city. What we'd like to propose is a two-step RFQ process for a hotel. There has been a lot of interest. The RFQ itself will be able to gauge the amount of interest in terms of that particular hotel, and there has been quite a bit of interest in terms of hotel. The RFQ will take us through the summer, which will allow further dialogue with Cameron County in terms of communication and expectations and so forth, working on the legal aspects of some of those elements. So we come to you for your concurrence in moving forward on the RFQ for the hotel. That will allow us to move forward on that and have additional conversation with Cameron County. That discussion will deal with what the expectations from Cameron County are in terms of revenue, what the gross receipts from Cameron County that might be able to benefit, and maybe any other discussions in terms of revenue associated with that particular hotel. There's also some land considerations, and we all know that there's an existing ground lease that's currently in the play, roughly about another 25 years left on that ground lease, but we'd like to have some further discussion on that ground lease in terms of how that's going to be framed for the next 50 years. We'd like to have some discussion about maybe expanding those boundaries in terms of the current ground lease. And obviously, what's going to be important in terms of the Cameron County is the strong connection with the beach. We know that Cameron County owns property on the east side, on the beach side. We'd like to have some conversation about how that connection comes into play and how we all can benefit in terms of having that strong connection. And the structure in terms of how that's going to move forward, this is going to be right now currently a private RFQ in terms of development, but there also could be some public collaboration in terms of additional revenue or additional options in terms of how to move forward, and of course, the TERS in terms of having some conversation in terms of the TERS and how it affects South Padre Island and Cameron County. So those are kind of the items that we wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on in terms of where we're at, the status, and actually receive your concurrence in terms of moving forward on the RFQ for the hotel. Mayor, do you have some additional thoughts, comments?
Yes, obviously, and we should consider this an economic development project, as I think that it will greatly increase revenues, especially during the off-season. This is my main purpose for trying to follow this through, and so the sooner we get a lot of these things done, obviously, the better that we can move forward and get it on stream and start booking conventions. So, you know, we want to move as quickly as feasible and practical, doing our due diligence, which we've been doing. I want to come back to the Commissioners' Court and see about the TERS, which will assist us, and I know that there's several issues regarding that, which we'd be more than happy to talk about, but the TERS can assist us in paying for the bonds that will be utilized even though we are committing hotel-motel tax dollars. We want to use TERS, if possible, as a backup, along with some other things that we want to do on South Padre Island. So, you know, we know that working with you is vitally important, obviously. You're the landlord, and we want to move forward. There's some boundaries. We want to expand our boundaries just a little bit. There's some areas that we think we can take in that can assist us and help us in getting additional parking, which we do need. We're going to get our surveyors to get those boundary lines and see, I mean, it's like 500 feet to the north and to the east, I believe, primarily, on area that just, you know, was never, for whatever reason, was never utilized in this 30-acre tract, and it wouldn't be all that much to include it in, in order to provide some more parking and space for the project.
Mayor, I have a question. When you're defining the parking for the hotel, it worries me that that would not be enough, you know? I believe you said it's 250 or 300 spaces?
575, Commissioner. 575.
But that's just for the hotel? With the Convention Center, right?
That's surface parking as it stands right now, and that's one reason we want to expand our boundaries. We're also trying to get some property permitted that's considered wetlands within that 30-acre tract. So we've got some land that hopefully we will be able to fall back on in the next year or two, hopefully, if, you know, presuming we get it permitted, which I think we will. So the parking is an issue, and that's why we want to expand the boundaries some. Obviously, we're not going to move forward unless we have adequate parking, but the process right now is to find out if we have legitimate groups that are interested in the hotel, and that's the purpose of going out for the RFQ. If there are, then we can start addressing some of these issues.
Well, I just want you to know that I feel that I'm all for this, okay? But I also want to remind you all, right now, you're coming to us for your blessing. But in the past, we've had some issues, you know, and I want to remind South Padre Island that they are part of Cameron County. And, you know, the Birding Center, the boardwalk issue, I think, you know, we had to force our hand there. We also had, you came to us, you needed space for your public works, and we conceded to it. You're now within East Blanca Park. You know, you've lobbied against the county's proposed beach legislation. It wasn't until we found out that you were thinking of taking over some of the zoning areas... areas. And so in an effort to move forward, I would like to see a lot more cooperation from South Padre Island with Cameron County. This has nothing to do with Mr. Gallegos's presentation, but I think for a long time, you know, we've done everything that we could possibly do to help the island out. One of the issues that came up was when we got the ARA funds. This court named several people to be able to go over certain projects. You all came to us, you needed a million dollars to rebuild your fire department. When you all opened it and everything, I had, the person that I put on there was not from the island, okay? And he had to fight with a lot of other people that were looking out for other areas of the county. And I felt that it was really important that they understand that the island needed their fire station. When you all opened it, you never gave any, any credit to Cameron County for having fought for you all.
Having funded the project.
Funded, yeah. And so I think, I just want to send a message to the island that they don't stand alone, okay? And, you know, like right now, you have a, an issue with four signs north of the city. They're not hurting anybody, and they, they were allowed to be there through county zoning ordinances. They complied, and now you all want them taken off. So if we're talking about cooperation, I'm all for it, but I need for you all to be at the table at the same time. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to discuss any of those issues with you on any agenda item that you wish to put on, or privately. I won't make any comments at this time.
It seems that it's best to discuss publicly.
Well, no, it's not, it's not on the agenda, Commissioner, and I didn't, and so I didn't want to pursue it.
It's on the agenda to look at possible improvements. I think we're looking at two different projects. I think the, is, and I want to ask this question, and I concur with everything you said, so I agree with you on everything. I really don't want to go break locks and take down doors anymore. That's just not my manner of operation. But I tell you what, I will do it, you know, when I think, and I believe that public access to any entity that, or any part of structures that are owned by the county that deserve public access should have public access. It doesn't matter, you know? I mean, I, I don't mind doing it. But I think it's important, for me at least, right now, and I know we met with you briefly on this particular issue at the island. Is one totally contingent on the other or not?
Is, is what?
Is, is what you're telling us and proposing here today is the expansion of the convention center, one project, and the hotel issue RFQ, another project?
Well, you know, I, I think I would let Gilbert answer that, but personally, I believe that the hotel can be a very important part of the expansion of the convention center. As you and I have spoken before, it certainly adds.
Necessary, right.
It certainly adds an important part to the overall scheme. You know, there's some out there that think that the, that the hotel is not required and that you just shuttle people to the convention center, and you can do that. But I do think that an anchor hotel is probably very important. I would think twice if a hotel were not possible on the property. I think a hotel is in everyone's best interest. I think if there's interest out there, I think the county can make some good revenue out of it. I think it can help the city and the county and, and the region overall.
Yeah, but my question again.
So I do think it's an important part of the project.
It's a component to it, but.
That's correct.
Your convention center restoration and improvements are one track right now, right?
Yes. It, it has to be renovated. There's no question about it.
Right, yeah.
With or without the hotel, it's going to get renovated.
So can we deal with that issue first?
Well, we, Commissioner, I'd, I'd really like to be able to move forward with the RFQ, just to see if anyone's interested. You know, it's not as if we're, you know, we're first going to go out to RFQs and then once we get interest, we're going to meet with.
The devil, the devil is in the details, okay? As far as RFQs is concerned. And, you know, I, I don't want to be the devil in the details. I want to be an ally in the details, but I want to make sure that fiduciarily, I'm protecting the interest of Cameron County, not South Padre in particular, okay?
Well, no, we're, we're, we're trying to protect everyone's interest if, I mean, we're all in it together. I mean, you know, we, we have the lease with the county and we realize that. And we also realize that we pay a lot of taxes to the county. And so we are a very genuine partner with the county. There's no doubt about that. What we'd like to do is go out and find out if there's any interest.
Well, everybody pays an equal amount of taxes all across the county, regardless, regardless of where the resident is.
I'm just commenting on the fact that we are, I'm just commenting on the fact we're a good partner with the county, I think. And so, you know, what I'd like to do is, if possible, is allow us to go out to RFQs, which you will be included with in, and if we get interest, then we would then come to the county with and say, okay, these are the ones that are interested. Now we sit down at the table all together to negotiate. I mean, but if we don't know that there's interest, how can we get to that point? I, I mean, it seems, you know, we're not going out for RFPs, we're going out for RFQs. We want to find out if there's interest. We think there's interest out there. The indication is that there is. So we want to know who it is and, and what they are willing to do to sit down at the table with you and us. I mean, that, that's kind of the long and the short of it.
Could I interject something right here for just a second? Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, when you say we're just going out for RFQs, not RFPs, we're not, you're not attempting to bind the county to any particular.
That's correct.
Scheme, okay?
North Canadian.
And so this is just an exploratory effort at this moment. Whatever is to be done, if anything, in the future, we'll have to get the blessing of the Commissioners' Court.
We understand there's interest. We want to know who's interested and to what degree. And then when we find out that there's interest, we're going to say, okay, now we have to sit down with the county and see what everybody is going to bring to the table.
Yeah, so it's understood that this is very much preliminary to any final deal binding on Cameron County.
Very preliminary.
Right?
Very preliminary.
All right.
Even for the city, it's very preliminary. We, we, we just want to know, you know, okay, is someone interested out there? And if you are, who are you and what do you bring to the table?
Okay, so nobody's going to be bound, including the city?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would you, I would like to see that our county staff is assigned to work with South Padre Island while they're starting out this venture. That's my suggestion.
Mayor, the, first of all, let me, let me preface my comments by saying that, that I acknowledge what Commissioner Benavides and Commissioner Gatzas said and their concerns, and I agree with them. The island may be an island, but it's not an island. It's part of Cameron County and, and the, the concerns that, and I realize that, you know, the twenty percent plus of ad valorem tax that's generated by the island, and there, there's no doubt that we are partners, but we, we have had some, some concerns and some issues that have come about because of the, the posturing that the, that the island leadership, not necessarily you per se, but I guess the city council, has had in regarding to issues with our due protection, zoning, signage, you know, the boardwalk. I mean, there's, there's been a multitude of, of concerns that, that it appears to fall on deaf ears at times. I, I don't want to hold this project hostage and say, because I think it's a good, I, I think we, we do, for the most part, have some fairly good relationships. But we have had some issues that, that have strained the, you know, our, our working together on this, and, you know, the, the TERS is, was one example, and the other ones that have been mentioned by, by the two Commissioners. I'd like to see this project move forward, but there, there's got to be something, you know, your, our interests should be pretty parallel, but it appears that the, over the last twenty-four months or eighteen months, the, for whatever reason, the island, the island, the leadership has, has given the county headaches and opposition, either at the state level or at the local level. I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I don't need to get, you know, as, as, as one member, get credit for stuff that happens. I mean, I think we're all a team and we want to work as a team, but it's kind of hard when, when we're going to go out to the field and play, but the other team knows what our plays are. And it just, it's just, that is not a good feeling. I think we all want to be partners in this endeavor with you, but we're going to have to have some teeth into something that prevents you from lobbying against the county in the future. And I don't know what that is yet. I, I don't know if we, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what, what is it we can do?
Well, I'm not sure we lobbied against the, I, I called you and said, here's what happened, and here's what we're trying to do to resolve the issue.
Yeah, after, post.
Well, when I found out about it.
Yeah, after the fact.
I was not even aware that it was being filed. There was some interest in it. We then talked about a possible inter-local, since we're going to be annexing north at some point, as a matter of fact, we've started. At some point, that land is going to come under our, our jurisdiction directly, and we want to make sure that it, that we can blend in with it. And so I didn't think at the time that it was, that it was really looking, we, we didn't try to preempt you. That was a mistake, and I called you and I said, here's what we're trying to do.
Well, then.
And so, you know, I don't really understand, you know, I don't want to make strains when a strain is not there. You know, I think that, you know, sometimes, as you know, you're doing some things, we're doing some things out there, we have a community to run, and I've got my constituency to answer to as well. And trying to balance it with the county sometimes does conflict, and, and, and it does have to be, I think, a two-way street. You know, we're, we're as much of a partner to you as you are to us, and we need to work together, not together separately.
I agree.
And, and so, you know, there may be some, some different thoughts on how to go about doing that, but, you know, it has been strained in the past, and, and I've come continuously, and I have offered apologies for any mistakes that have been made. Right now, what we're trying to do is we think a win-win for everyone in this area on this project. And I don't think anything, I mean, if there's issues, we need to discuss them. And we can discuss them publicly or privately, either way. I've got no problem either way. But I wouldn't want to mix issues that we think exist when really I don't think they do, but maybe some think they do.
And that's the problem.
And that can be easily resolved.
That's the problem.
By just discussing it, but, but it's, it's a two-way discussion.
Yeah, it's, it is, and, and it sounds really good, but, you know, that, that's not what has transpired, so.
The council definitely wants to work with you.
Okay, and that's why I said, I don't want to hold this, this project hostage. I mean, I, I think every, every issue should stand on its own merit, and this stands on its own merit. But I think what the Commissioners have echoed, that there's, there's been some frustration and, and some really like, you just said you weren't aware of it. Well, then somebody was.
Mm-hmm.
Because some, somebody filed something based on someone's something.
And when I was informed by the lobbyists that had been filed, he called and he said, you know, you need to tell them that we're taking it off. And one, and one was taken off and one was, they went on ahead and filed, and we didn't pursue it.
Okay, well, let's move forward.
And that was the call.
And I just, I just want, you know, I think that, that we need to be made aware of issues that, that affect not only, you know, your, your, your area, but, you know, if it affects you, it affects us. So we just, we, we need to make sure that we're in the loop somehow, either, either through staff. It's normally the, the best way to do it, and if they can't cure it, then, then we, we take it as a, as a, as a body.
And I'd be more than happy to have any staff member involved. We've offered, you know, for members of the Commissioners' Court to attend our meetings. You know, I've met with a couple of Commissioners, keep, trying to keep them updated as things happen. Some of these things were happening, you know, we didn't, we didn't address some of these issues entirely with you because we had our own issues on the island on moving forward, using hotel-motel tax money, a substantial amount, I might add. At some point, we'll be making a two-million-dollar-a-year payment for this complex and for the renovation and expansion, assuming we move forward with that.
Speaking of expansion, is there, is there in the agreement a, a different rate structure for expansion to the county?
I think we're going to have to revisit that agreement in.
Yes.
Very much so. It, it doesn't really speak to that, to my recollection.
No, it, it's going to be part of the discussions with you, and I think that we probably will have to have a, maybe an executive session to discuss real estate. And I, I don't know how you want to handle it. Again, it's fine with me in public or an executive session, however you want to deal with it. But, you know, this path forward on hotel and other tells us the process we want to go through, which includes land considerations, the ground lease, expanding the boundary a little bit, it's not all that much, a beach connection, gross receipts, things of this nature. We need to sit down.
And I think that included needs to be hotel-motel tax, because we're entitled as a county to collect some of that.
Well, I, I, I don't know about that. That's something for the county to do. But, you know, I mean, our hotel-motel tax is being used to pay for this. And, and so we want to make sure if we're going to use that amount, that it's going to be well-placed and well-managed and with a, with a good return, not only to the city, the county and the state, because the state collects hotel-motel tax.
All right.
Or we collect it for them. So in any case, I think the, I think the move forward for an RFQ to see what the interest is, is important, and you can assign someone, we can send, you know, a copy of it to your council.
Who are you going to have develop the RFQ on behalf of the city?
We've already done that. We could forward that.
So what do you, what do you need us for then?
No, well, we want, we want your blessing and move forward with the RFQ, but, you know, it's a, it's a draft.
Okay, so you've already drafted the RFQ?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you, both of y'all drafted that? Okay. Can you, have you forwarded that to us? Can you do that? And then before you let it out, give us an opportunity to look at it, if we have to make any amendments or changes or just some questions before it goes out, hopefully within the next thirty days? Can we do that? Okay. Do I hear a motion to, I guess, acknowledge and would the proper term be move forward?
Judge, use whatever term you wish.
What do y'all want to make?
Well, I think you could have a motion to move forward upon the terms just discussed about forwarding the RFQ, you know, and awaiting our blessing, I guess you would say, on the RFQ itself, if that's what you're intending about.
I think that's the main, the main thing at this point, correct?
And increase property.
You know, and, and the, yeah, and the increased boundaries that you all are requesting.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get our surveyors to take a look and see what is available out there that is not wetlands, to see what can be expanded. You know, hopefully we can get some land out there that can help us on parking issues and things of this nature. And then we'll come back to you with that.
Okay.
Judge, as a matter of procedure, if we're going to not give an unqualified blessing at this point to the RFQ that's been prepared, we just need to put it back on the agenda next meeting and, in the meantime, take a look at it.
So I guess the motion would be just to acknowledge the presentation and then await the, us receiving the RFQ, review it, and then take action at that point.
Okay.
Put it on for the next meeting.
That's, that's two weeks.
So move.
All right? Move by Commissioner Gatzas, same by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Let me take the, let me take our, our beach rescue. I want to meet the guy that got hooked, but they threw him back because he wasn't a keeper. This is item H, consideration acknowledgement of Tomas Wilson, Matthew Thorn, Thornok, Michael Johnson, Edward Sanchez, Brandon Tovar, Pedro Cuellar, for performing a beach rescue of three park visitors along the jetty, Isla Blanca Park. Come on up, I guess.
Judge, good, good morning, Commissioners. Edward was the only one that was able to stay behind. The supervisors had to leave, but at the request of the Commissioners, or Commissioner, we put this item on. There was an incident that happened on May eleventh where there were training, and I'll let Edward, because he was there firsthand, to, to explain exactly what had happened.
You have since have put signage up to keep people from swimming in that part adjacent to the jetties, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a few pictures also. I'll just put them in the background and put it, these are pictures that we took on Memorial Day weekend. Edward, you want to go ahead and explain what it was?
Well, what happened was during training, there was these three little kids on a raft, kind of, in a raft, and the rip current had started taking them out, and my supervisor kind of, in a raft, and the rip current had started taking them out, and my supervisor, Michael, had started running after them to go get them, and then he yelled for backup, so Tom went out, and then I went up. And by the time we got there, Michael had already taken out a kid and had him in his hands, and they were just floating there, and Tom had grabbed the raft so it wouldn't capsize, I guess. And I had gone around, and the little girl had fallen out, and I grabbed her, and then another lifeguard, Brandon, had came by, and I gave the little girl to him, and I told him to go back to the beach, and then they swam back. And then the little boy, I had grabbed him, and I gave him to Dylan, and then they had gone, and then it was just Michael, the supervisor with the kid, and he couldn't pull them out because he was grabbing them. So I tied my two around them, and then I swam back to the beach.
And you got hooked when? And explain that, because I mean, I know what happened, because your uncle called me when I was driving back from somewhere, and he called and explained what had happened. I think I called Javier right away, or Joe, and said, you know, because we didn't know about it, it happened, and apparently that you got-
Yeah, I got hooked.
Hooked by, by a big hook?
Yeah, on the foot, and my supervisor, Michael, got hooked in the arm, and then Tom got hooked in the arm, too.
Now, this is by, explain, though, that was hooked by people that were fishing off the Jetties, correct?
Yes.
Off and going over to the north side of the Jetties is where this happened, correct? Okay.
And, well, we told them to pop the line, but I guess they couldn't hear us, so I just grabbed the line, bit it off them.
They didn't start to reel you in, did they?
I hope not.
All right, all right.
It hurt. And then Dylan got hooked in the head. And then Beach Patrol got there, and they just checked all of us out, and that's it. That's pretty much what happened.
And this happened the weekend, the first weekend that they were, no?
No, we were still in training.
They were still in training.
They were still in training. Well, I asked Javier to put it on the agenda, because I wanted the public to know that now we've got lifeguards out there, and even our beach patrol, our park rangers are also working hard to make it as safe as possible for the public. And your uncle called me, too. I thought he was your dad, I'm sorry. Okay. At any rate, I, he was wondering if we could put up any signs stopping people from fishing on the north side of the Jetties, and I explained to him that we could not. But I think that the public needs to know that whenever they are fishing in that area, and there's any attempt to rescue any person in a drowning situation, that they should be aware, and they should pull their reels in, reel in their lines, and in order, I mean, I don't know how large your gash was.
It was like that big, it was on my foot, so.
Okay.
Well, you're walking fine.
But you're walking fine, you survived.
But we did put signs up already, because, you know, now the sign says, is it no swimming or no fishing to the right?
No, no swimming.
Is no swimming to the right, so the signs are, you did put up some signs already, which is good.
I'm not sure if we put them on yesterday, or-
Well, I just saw a picture of them.
Oh, okay, then what they're up?
That was, that was a sample of what we were going to put up.
Okay.
What you're going to put up.
So you're going to put those up, then. Well, thank you, you know, it's always, it's always good to, Commissioner, thank you for placing it on the agenda. It's always good to hear some of the good stuff that our young adults do. Normally, you hear all the bad stuff, but this is the kind of good stuff that warrants not only that the public know what's going on, because you guys are good kids, and you're doing something to help the community, and we want to thank you for it, and next time, just keep doing what you're doing. So you're through with training, you can swim now. So you're going to show your uncle how to swim?
I went to state, so.
So what?
I went to state for swimming, so.
Yes, he did, in competition, so.
No, but I'm talking about your uncle.
Oh.
I mean, to teach your uncle how to swim, I don't know if he can swim yet. Your dad. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Want to acknowledge it, and thank you for your, for your public service, and keep up the good work, and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me hear a motion to acknowledge-
Judge, one other note I'd like to state for the record is that our park rangers, we have a young man who was very observant, and they were able to stop a drug deal from going down. So, and they're out there, they talk to the public, and so they're doing a very, very good job, and I'd just like to point out that, you know, bringing the park rangers back has been very good for our beaches.
Thank you. I had a motion by Commissioner Benavides to acknowledge, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Adnantes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let me take another item out of order, which is the presentation by the Rio Grande Water Authority regarding Mexico's failure to allocate water to the Rio Grande as per the 1944 treaty. Joe Barretta, thank you.
No, thank you. Point of personal note, I should say, on 3:00 on Monday, my grandson, Eddie Lucio IV, was born.
Yes, congratulations.
For your benefit, Sophie, you're seven pounds, 20 inches, most men don't care about that, but most women do. I went to see him Tuesday, and his other grandfather had a golf club and a sign that said, "E4 for Governor 2050." Of course, that's not true. But I did have a rod and reel, a shotgun, and a picture of a sunset on South Padre Island, hopefully, he'll lean that way instead of in politics like the rest of the family.
And a UT Longhorn football, I would hope.
Probably, of course. Based on family background, probably. I'm here representing the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority. A lot of you know me, when I was with the Brownsville Irrigation District, I was there for 19 years, and I jumped right out of the frying pan into the fire with this position. Of course, we're all aware of what's happening with Mexico water issue. As of yesterday, Mexico owes us 477,000 acre feet, based on treaty obligation. That's enough water to service all the cities in the Rio Grande Valley for two years. So it's a substantial amount, and to put that in some kind of perspective, acre foot of water, if you took a football field, less the end zones, and put an acre foot, one foot of water over the football field, it would stack up 477,000 times. So that's a lot of water that they owe us. Of course, the treaty was written in 1944, and it's a, it's a two-river treaty, actually. The one is in Colorado and California. The US delivers to Mexico on an annual basis 1.5 billion acre feet of water a year. Since the treaty was written, the US has never failed to deliver that water. The portion of the Rio Grande, the way it's written, is that we're supposed to get from Mexico an average over a five-year period of 350,000 acre feet. These cycles start and end whenever there's a storm event.
There's a what?
When there's a storm event. When a storm event and the lakes fill, the debt goes away. Prior to 1975, Mexico never tried to meet those obligations, because there were no dams in the rivers in Mexico. Currently, there's dams and rivers in Mexico, and since then, they have yet to honor the treaty, their treaty obligation, and provide the 350,000 acre feet average in a five-year cycle, per year in a five-year cycle. The last time this happened, which was in the 2000s, I'm sure everybody that was around then knew we had a, had the same problem we have now, and it's going to happen again, we had a storm event. It bailed Mexico out. They have never honored the treaty as the treaty is written. On one occasion, President, then President Bush and President Fox signed over 25,000 acre feet out of a non-treaty reservoir, which we took, of course, we needed the water. And right after that, we had a hurricane come through, through, fill the reservoirs, and the debt went away. So we're back in that same position, and owing 477,000 acre feet, I can't see where we'll ever get that water. Currently, 80% of the water that comes to the Rio Grande River comes from the Conchos River. Mexico is building 15 new dams in the Conchos Valley, nine of them which directly affect the flows into the Conchos, which affect what comes into the Rio Grande. What people don't realize is that the rip, the water that comes from Mexico, US only gets one-third of that water. So for them to deliver 477 or half a million acre feet of water to the US, they would have to put in 1.5 million acre feet of water into the Rio Grande. Mexico gets the other two-thirds. So in essence, they're, they've, they're kind of hurting their own people down here in the Matamoros area. So we'll take this one step further, is the fact that currently, on the Conchos River, the lakes are 114% of capacity. We're in, we're already in June, so they have been irrigating all this time and still have a 114% of capacity. Their irrigation districts are growing in Mexico, they've added 10,000 acre feet of pecan orchard, they've added, I don't know how many acres of vegetables, they grow high-intent, water-intent vegetables, and melons, and a lot of pecans and stuff like that. So I can't see us, I can't see us getting any water from any, anytime soon. So what the authority is doing, we're doing two things. One, Judge, you're hosting a meeting here in Cameron County next Thursday for the cities, the municipalities, the water supply corporations, to try to regionalize based on the new Senate Bill Four and House Bill Six that passed, and now the funding bill, which comes up for vote, I think it's the fifth or sixth of November, and I can't see it failing. But we're trying to regionalize the, let me back up, the only way we're going to get that money is if we go with the three things that they specify, population, some rural efforts, and regionalization. To compete with the Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, El Paso, all the big cities, we're going to have to become a region, we're going to have to let egos go aside, and we're going to have to start. The footprint of the authority is Webb, Starr, Willacy, Cameron, and Hidalgo County. And with the meetings that we've had in Hidalgo, now the one that you're hosting next Thursday, we hope that, that we can get the cities, the irrigation districts, water supply people all gathered together and present a region. We've already started putting pieces of this puzzle together. We have Black and Beach, very well-known international engineering firm. We have Bickerstaff, David Mendez over there, who is very knowledgeable on how to get money from the government and how to finance some of this stuff. We've worked very closely with Texas Water Development Board. Of course, the authority is going to take the lead in this, and with the help of the counties, having these, the cities and so forth, come to these meetings. It has been refreshing, I guess is a good term, to know that people are now realizing that we have to become a region and be less dependent on the river, particularly the municipal side. Of course, the ag's still going to have to depend on the river, because you can't produce enough water, and it'd be too darn expensive to put on crops if you use desal or whatever else we need to do. Interconnects are going to be important, one city to another, this pushwater thing has cost Rio Hondo a ton of money, they're liable to really suffer, and could very well go into a debt they can't afford. I know Raymondville, they have to pay for water to move water up there for 52 miles. I mean, it's been a pretty catastrophic incident in the last several years, and it doesn't look like it's going to improve. The weather, the weatherman, Barry Goldsberry, I think's his name, he doesn't, he doesn't predict that we'll be getting storms, because of La Niña pushes everything north of us. Of course, this last one went to Florida, and it looks like Houston and San Antonio's and Austin's are going to get a lot of the weather that we need to get. So it doesn't look, doesn't look real good for us. So by becoming a region, we can go after some of this money. When I talk about a region, we're talking about going after this $2 billion, $2.6 billion that was just approved by the Texas Rainy Day Fund to come out of there. Out of that, 420%, 400 million of it can go for infrastructure improvements, and that's what the authority is going to go after. We're going to go after our portion of that for the Rio Grande Valley, Starr County, and Webb County. Lareda came to me yesterday, they had opted out of the authority. Tomas came over yesterday at the region meeting, he said, how do we get in? So the plan has already started leaking out, that what we're working on in Texas Water Development Board has been extremely helpful in how we structure this, structure our plan. So the other, the other thing that we're doing is, everybody's read the paper, we're Philimon Vela and Cornyn and Eddie Three and Carlos Rubenstein, everybody's been hammering on the State Department and the President. We thought that the same squeaky wheel may not be getting any attention, so the authority started a campaign, a petition campaign that's on our website, rgrwa.org. And all you have to do is go to the website, hit the petition campaign, sign it. It's only been active for about two weeks, and we've already got close to 500 signatures. We'd like to get this board, people that are sitting here, to get on there and sign up. We have people from all over the United States signing up on the campaign, a lot of winter Texans, believe it or not, have signed up on this campaign, because they come down here.
Can you repeat that?
Rio Grande Regional Water Authority, rgrwa.org. And right in the middle of it is a button, you just push it, it says, sign the, sign the petition. And that petition is designed to go straight to President Obama. I mean, he's got a lot of votes down here. We're hoping that maybe we can get some attention from him if we unite and get this to him. We'd like to have, of course, our pie in the sky is 100,000, but if we get 25,000, that'd be great. So we're asking everybody to do that. Sophie, you got some of those cards at the cog? So, and we have some more coming, we have another 1,200 or so coming, I'd like to be able to give them to different people, so that they can hand them out to people, to people that come in, they can look at it, and they can, they can vote. So, Judge, I want to thank you for your resolutions and all the things that you've done, and this commission for all the things you've done in support of what we're doing. The meeting next Thursday, I think, is a very important meeting. I want to thank Roberto Barretta, his staff, they're putting this thing together, they're doing a really good job. I'm on the phone to poor Jessica, she's tired of hearing from me, I guess, or asking her if I can help. But they're putting this thing together, and I've entertained everybody coming and see what we have. Our speakers for that meeting are going to be, of course, the judge, we have Jim Darling as the president of the authority, Eddie Lucio III, Representative Lucio is going to be there, Joe I, who is the water guru for Black and Beach Engineering Firm, we have Dan Harden, either that or Connie Townsend from Texas Water Development Board.
Are they still in existence?
Pardon me?
I mean, I thought that board had been dissolved like a week and a half ago.
The, the, good point. What happened is the board is gone, but these people still work for Texas Water Development Board, these are employees. The board has been disbanded with the new bill.
I think it's September 1st.
September 1st, they're going to, they're going to-
They're going to go down to three-
Yeah, they're going to go to a three-commissioned full-time board instead of a part-time board, just like TCQ. TCQ's got three full-time members. There's rumors who, who might be the three that, that would be the new commissioners. One of them has been a very good friend to the valley, I hope she gets it, but we'll see, that's all been kept pretty quiet. But September 1st, there will, I'm sure there'll be some announcements.
On this new money and the new legislation, Mr. Barretta, did they, I don't remember what actually ended up passing, were there any restrictions as to how much of that money would be able to be accessed by large municipal systems?
No.
So in other words, Dallas can come in and wipe it out?
Well, that's why we want to be a region, because the three topics that they talk about in the bills are first, population, you know, Miss Bank for the Bucks. They have a big piece of it for rural and regionalization. So if we go in-
But they did not designate percentages for anyone?
No.
And, you know, I mean, I know that when we were up there at some of the hearings, some of the conversations were a large utility could come in and basically wipe out the fund with one project.
They, they probably could, but I just don't believe they're going to allow that to happen, but, you know, I'm not, that's what they had, they, right now, Region M is putting together a subcommittee that's going to categorize the projects in the valley. Well, yesterday, when I talked to them about this regionalization program that the authority's working on, they, they really kind of jumped on it, and I could, the things that I've been doing the last several weeks, and I promised Carlos I wouldn't take but an hour. Not true, right? But-
It's almost up.
It's almost up. But, but what we did, when we realized that what, when the bill was initially written, now you have to remember that the House Bill Four, Senate Bill Six passed, the one we're voting now on, in November, is just the funding part of it. The bills have passed, and they're written, and the three major components are population, rural efforts, and regionalization. rural efforts, and regionalization. So when we saw that, the Authority got jumped on the fact that we need to, we need to get everybody's involved. You've got little cities like Raymondville, but they don't have but a two-day supply of water. La Villa, Rio Grande, Rio Hondo. East Rio Hondo has no secondary source. They have a secondary source, but not enough to do to supply what they want. We can just go up...Hidalgo County is probably got more little cities with problems than Cameron County, but Cameron County still has its issues. We have lots of old irrigation districts. And what I mean by that is the district's new, but the facilities are old. And this bill allows us to fix some of those facilities. But you've got to remember, these are loans. They're going to be 50% of whatever the market is, they're going to be loans.
Joe, the...I mean, everyone knows that Cameron County and this commission has been promoting taking a regional concept on just about everything, and you know that since I came on board, and it's something that we try. But as soon as you start talking about...I mean, look at the issues we had with the UT Medical School. Everybody started off really cool, and at the end of the day, things started, you know, people started posturing, and, you know, it became very somewhat polarizing and political. You know, and everybody else looks at us as a region. We're the only ones here that don't. And it just goes back to issues that we've had for a long, long time. So I certainly hope that this is a true regional endeavor. I saw Manuel here earlier, and it's ironic that we were...he did an interview back in March, late March, about getting President Obama involved in this. And I remember right after that report, it was March 25th or 26th, I was criticized for actually asking the President to get involved because that's the state, that's our congressman. But I saw it, you know, I think we saw it coming back then, that we were not getting anywhere. And I think subsequent to that, then I think you asked President Obama to get involved, I think our congressman. I don't understand why there...you know, he was just down there to meet with the President not too long ago, and this topic did not even come up. And it should, because it is an issue that's affecting millions of people. The...as part of this water, this legislative money that's out there, you know, if we're ever going to be looking at a true permanent water source, it's really developing a viable desal plant, a desalinization plant. We have an unlimited use of water that's not too far from here, and everybody's going to talk about the cost. And what we're seeing now is that how can you place a cost when you open up your tap and nothing comes out? And I think that's what some of these committees are going to be facing very, very shortly. So, you know, we will do everything that we...tell us what you need from us, and we'll do everything that we can from our vantage point.
Well, so far, this court's done everything we've asked. What...just one of the issues that we developed is the Region M plan originally had 19 desal plants. So, and that's another thing, you're not going to get anything that's not on the Region M plan. That's the water plan. So they had 19 desal plants. Well, what's the most expensive part of running a desal plant? It's electricity.
Electricity.
So when this word starts getting out about now, maybe we could do five big desal plants. ERCOT, they had a guy that's working with the county on doing this wind generation in the Gulf. They've called. They want to be able to level out their loads, and actually said, made the comment that we would like to sell you electric at cost so that our loads would be level. So that brings the cost of the desal plants, not 19 of them, but possibly three, four, five, or whatever. Now, back to the fact that, you know, the college thing, the university thing, nothing says that we have to tie...we need to go after this money as a group, and somebody asked me, "Can the Authority have debt?" And the answer is yes. And the way we have debt is, and it's in the legislation, is City of Brownsville needs water. Of course, City of Brownsville, I talked to John Bruciac, he'll play whether they need to or not. We need to get the big cities involved. But if the City of Brownsville needed water, they would contract with us. The contractor would then fund the bonds and the payback to the Texas Water Development Board. So we're still putting all these pieces together, how we fund it. The biggest problem is how do we fund the studies that are needed to get it done? So far, Bickerstaff, Black and Beach have not charged a dime, and we've sat down many meetings to discuss how we're going to do this. Texas Water Development Board, they...it was going to cost us $55,000 to amend the 2011 water plan, Region M plan. Where are we going to get the $55,000? We started sitting down with the Texas Water Development Board and said, "We don't have that kind of money to do a plan." So the new plan that's due in 2016, yesterday I asked them to consider the Authority to be a wholesale water provider for desal plants. The Region M took it into consideration. The subcommittee has to approve it, then the development board pays for it. If it becomes a strategy, a usable strategy, then we can amend the other plan for about $10,000, and we can start planning our desal part of the plan before 2016 when the other plan's approved. It becomes...that's why I say it takes...there's a lot of pieces of these puzzles that have to come together. And one of them is the meeting next Thursday. Letters went out on the Hidalgo County meeting. Actually, they're going today, follow-up meetings. There were 62 people involved, 62 people invited, 55 showed up. We've had phone calls already, "When are you going to start? When are you going to start?" Black and Beach has talked with Ferris and Flynn. Ferris and Flynn is going to do what they call the 50,000-foot layover. You know, "Bring something to us, let's see if it fits, let's see if it fits the Region M plan, then how do we tie it together so that we don't have individuals trying to get the money?" They're only going to do it if we can tie this stuff together. Another thought is, all irrigation districts run north and south. What if we had a line that ran east and west? Somebody ran out of water, you can move water over here, move water over there. You know, it just...there's so many things that have to be done, and it's going to take a couple of years to get this plan working. So we started. We want to get the jump on it, and by getting the jump on it, we want to get our ideas in the 2011 plan so that we're not waiting until 2016 to start planning. So we've already started moving toward an aggressive program that will put us in front. And if what Chairman Ritter tells me, and I sat in his office and talked to him about it, he said that would...if we could come, if you could get that damn valley to get together as a region, you'd go a long way of moving forward in getting the money. Simply said.
Joe, let's see, if I can ask you, can we schedule something Wednesday morning just to kind of go over Thursday's meeting to make sure we're on the same page? So can I schedule you now?
Sure.
Let's say for Wednesday at 9:00 AM at my office?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. And just maybe go over a program if we have...I'll have Humberto there as well.
Right. He's been very helpful, by the way.
Yeah.
Judge, when is this...it's going to be taking place on Thursday, but where and at what time?
It's going to be on Williams Road at the...
At the Annex.
At the Annex.
What time is it? 8:30, 9?
I think he said 8:00, 8:30. I haven't seen the agenda yet.
I haven't either. All right.
Be sure you're on...you got us on the calendar, Judge.
Yeah, I think I have that. Okay. Anything else, Joe?
That's it.
Thank you very much. I know that you've been really active in this.
Let me move a comment on a lighter note. I had lunch, and Chris and I and Arnold had lunch with your compadre the day after your grandson was born, and he already has an 18- to 24-inch golf club in a case, a beautiful carrying case, that he told us that he bought for Eddie III and never gave it to him. So it's going to be presented to your grandson from him, a beautiful piece of, a little piece, little golf club.
Yeah.
And congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very proud of all my grandkids, but the new ones always the ones that get spoiled first.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules.
Judge, Commissioners, the budget amendments were placed in front of you, and let me get them here real quick. The first one is the budget amendment for one of the health grants. The second page and thereon are the line item transfers. You've got mainly operational. You have the one for the JP admin where you approve the use of technology for the Odyssey modifications that needed to be done for some of the JPs. You've got the second page, you've got JPs, the DAs, MNO for the jail, constable's office, extension, office, engineering, City of Brownsville election, Boca, and the health grants, one for the parks, and then you have the boot camp, juvenile probation, and juvenile detention. You have the salary schedule, which is for Gateway Bridge, and the change there is for the phone allowance that was approved at the prior meeting for your approval.
Any questions?
You recommend their approval?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Gatsa?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let me go back to the consent real quick, because I think she's ready to go, and she's got to go get on her plane. On item ZB, and just for clarification, we did table item XC. Okay. You're ready?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The county has a total of 503 vehicles insured on the...for liability, and of the 503, 178 or right at 35% of those vehicles are covered for collision coverage.
Well, Ernie's here, he's the one that had the concern.
So your recommendation is still the same?
In all honesty, yes, given the fact that over the last five years, there has only been a payment made to the county totaling $5,100 because of uninsured motorist accidents, and you're paying more than $15,000 a year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, same by Commissioner Benavides. You know, and $10,000 is the difference when we paid out in the premium. It's a lot of money when it comes on budget time. I mean, we're trying to find $5,000 or $10,000, so it's a lot of money. So thank you very much. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.
Thank you for the clarifications on some of the issues that people had. I think it was helpful.
Claims.
Move to approve, Judge, as presented, unless there's changes.
Second.
Move by Commissioner...
That's on the budget amendment?
No, claims.
Oh, claims that have changes, yes.
You have changes?
Yes.
Unless there's changes, okay.
Claims, I need to read in warrant number 302404 as a void. You have the information on the healthcare claims. There is also a manual that we would like to read in, and that is the match that is required for item 2A. It's $17,067 as a match on the text-out agreement. And just to advise Commissioners Court, in the claims, there is a warrant for the Texas Conference of Urban Counties dues, which is $17,067. I know there was some discussion on it, so that is approved in the claims.
Well, my only question was, why couldn't we deduct the amount that we owed on the dues from the amount that we're supposed to be getting back from them? But I was told just to keep it separate, so I'm okay with that.
Right, right. And you have the payroll claim as well, approving payroll? Okay, thank you.
Those were included in my motion.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, same by Commissioner Benavides to approve claims. I don't think I had any affidavits, but if I do, I'll give them to you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. On the minutes of the 18th, 25th of April and May 9th?
Table, please.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa to table the minutes for another two weeks. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. On item D, I've been asked to table it. Do I have motion to table?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, same by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. On item E, discussion and possible action regarding the Veterans Bridge expansion. Pete was going to make a short presentation, but in a nutshell, 99% of the expansion is completed on our side. We anticipate Mexico, for their side, to be completed in November with the final inspection in December. That concludes my report.
You got it.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
You read it in the paper today.
Yeah, they did a good job. Do I hear motion to approve?
Some moved.
I mean, to acknowledge, I'm sorry. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, same by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries.
I think I have a comment on that one.
Okay.
Last week, you know, most of us here at Commissioners Court were at the SH550 event. But one of the visit that was made...
We all were.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was looking toward the very end over there. But one of the visits that was made was a visit to this bridge, and we had the FHWA...what was the official title, David? Administrator, you know, from the Federal Highway Administration's in town, visiting quite a few of our projects. You know, I had the privilege of accompanying him from the evening he arrived in Corpus till we brought him into the event here, and then the next day. But we impressed upon him the importance of the CBI funds in the transportation bill, and those are the Coordinated Border Infrastructure Funds, which is what was used to fund the expansion of that bridge. It was real interesting for him to see how the dollars are actually used at the local level. He...as a result of his visit, he not only visited that, but visited all the other projects that we were doing. Most importantly, he made a really important announcement, and that was a sign-off on I-69. He announced here in Brownsville, the I-69E designation, which is a stretch that goes from the Veterans Bridge. They like to call it University Drive, but it's actually the Veterans Bridge to the northern limits of Willacy County is I-69E. The next day in the morning in Harlingen at another meeting, he announced Interstate Two, which is from the interchange in Harlingen to Palmhurst, which is west of Mission, as Interstate Two. Of course, paralleling Interstate One on the Mexico side, or Highway One on the Mexico side, that grows from Matamoros to Reynosa, and we are Interstate Two on this side. At a subsequent meeting later that day in West Laco, he announced Interstate C, which is 69C, which is from the interchange and far to a little north of Edinburgh, you know, as that piece being connected to Interstate Two, and then Interstate Two connecting to I-69E, you know. But Judge, you talked about regionalism and all that. Yesterday, we had a meeting for a planned process to develop, you know, like where we're going to do the unveiling and all these things of signs. Went really well. For the record, you all need to kind of mark the 15th of July as a potential date to attend a function in relation to that, and in Mercedes, in one central location. Lo and behold, invitations have gone on in our neighboring county, saying, "Come join us at a function for Interstate Two and I-69C."
They left this out?
Right. So, you know, there's still a ways to go with some folks in this regional approach to things, you know. Invitations, we're not supposed to go out yet because we're not for sure that that date will be the date, but, you know, it's interesting to note these things. But anyway, as a result of that visit, I think that we've gained a lot of credibility with the Federal Highway Administration in regards to the projects that we've undertaken with their help in Cameron County. And the bridge is an example of what can be done. And, you know, I mean, we even told him, it came in pretty much considerably under budget with what we had projected, you know. And, you know, they were extremely impressed. By the end of that day, we were on Secretary La Hood's front-page blog letter, you know, which is nice, to be recognized for jobs well done.
Your three minutes were up, Commissioner. Thank you.
And I also had a grandson born on that same day, okay? So...
That's right.
You know. He didn't get golf clubs, he didn't get...but he did get a UT onesie, okay, to come home in, you know, just to impress my compadre, who is not a UT fan.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we already had a motion, a second, on the acknowledgement. Item G, consideration appointment of two zoning commissioners, the Padranian Zoning Commission, recommendations by the Commissioner Gary Meskey, or is it Mesk? Mesh?
Mesky.
Meskey and Chris Freeland. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item carries. Item I, discussion and possible action regarding computer and IT equipment needed in various county departments.
Judge, Commissioners, can we do this after executive session, please?
Okay. Okay, we're done with the action part. We have one item left, which we'll discuss after. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, same by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor...
Judge, can we table A?
Of executive session?
On executive session.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item A will be tabled and not discussed.